I call this meeting to order of the Joint Town Council and School Committee Meeting on Monday, October 18th, 2021 at 6:30 in the McKinnon Council Chambers. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Agenda item number four, I'm sorry, agenda item number three, roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Catrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Excused.
Counselor Jovan.
Excused.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Ms. Shea.
Present.
Mr. Murch.
Present.
Ms. DeMillo.
Present.
And Mr. Thomo.
Present.
Very good, we have a quorum of both committees, we can consider our business for this evening. Agenda item number four, Consider and Accept Joint Town Council/School Committee Minutes of August 6th, August 16th, 2021.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, any changes, additions, deletions? Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, there was no meeting, it was canceled, so I don't know why we have minutes for a meeting that was canceled.
Well, we have to record that, that we either started and tried.
So, Agenda 14, I mean, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, were never discussed. Nope.
That's right, those can be deleted.
Okay.
I did have a correction.
Certainly.
We did not have Chair DiMeio present, I believe on minutes he is down, I just haven't been able to tell.
Yeah, I'll remove him.
That's right, that can be deleted too, that can be changed. All right, I have an agenda item number three, the roll call, Counselor Jovan, not Counsel Chair Jovan, and the school committee members, not school committee meetings, who were in attendance. Very well, all those in favor? Anyone opposed?
I'm going to abstain because I was not here.
Very good. That makes, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, that makes 10 affirmative, no negative, one abstain. Moving on, agenda item number five, Review the following candidate requests submitted by Timothy Messier to fill a vacancy on the Southbridge School Committee effective immediately through June 14th, 2022, the next town election date, and according to the Southbridge Home Rule Charter, Chapter 3, Section 321. So moved.
Second.
Very good, discussion. Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, the Home Rule Charter, to me, it's just not very clear how this, how we appoint members of the school committee. I know with the town council, first of all, I'm not opposed to anybody tonight, I'm just asking about the charter. If we have a resignation on the town council, we, and it's within 180 days of the next election, we have to wait till the election.
Right.
But for the school committee, it's 120 days, if they resign within 120 days of the next election, we have to wait for the next election. But what's not clear to me is why, why do we have to, if we can appoint them, why would there be a, have to wait for it to be within 120 days? That's what just doesn't seem clear to me in the charter. And so, like I said, I'm not opposed to anyone here tonight being appointed here, I'm just wondering why, if there's no special election required for the school committee, why was there 120 days, would we have to wait 120 days till the next election? Maybe Counselor Ryan has an answer for that, but all I want to say is that I thought maybe the Charter Review Committee could just take a look at that and clear it up a little bit, because it just doesn't seem very clear to me. The town council, we have to have a special election, unless it's within 180 days, I need to wait till the next election. With the school committee, 120 days, but we can appoint them, it just doesn't seem clear to me, that's all. Thank you, that's all.
Points well taken, I'll speak with the Charter Commission about that.
Thank you.
Very good, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I can speak to some of that for clarification. The, you're right, I think that part of the charter needs to be cleaned up, because the language is older, from when before the law was passed to allow for appointments from the executive and school committee vacancies. So that, I believe that was part of the ed reform of '90. So it's probably just, that's probably just a leftover from before those days in which there was no law around that.
Thank you.
Very good, any further discussion? Counselor Laszlo.
I'd just like to comment on this gentleman that's in front of us tonight, I mean, I was very fortunate to coach him when he was nine years old, it's amazing. It's an amazing, it's an amazing concept, when you turn around and see a young fellow climb the ladder on education and various other things he's done in his life, he's done a great job, I'd just like to vouch for this gentleman, he's just a fantastic guy, he doesn't know how to quit, and I think he's doing a fine job today, keep up the good work there.
Very good, Counselor Steves.
Yeah, I would actually like to ask my semester, I assume he's here, just why he wants to be on the school committee in the first place?
Please, both the podium. Please state your name and address for the record.
Why do you want to be on the school committee in the first place? I mean, I see your background and it looks good, it would be ideal for the school committee, but...
So, I guess I became interested in education a long time ago, I went to Nichols College and got a degree in education, I've been teaching for 10 years now, I have a master's in administration in education, and I just feel like it's a great opportunity for me to give back to a community that's given to me, and I've invested in this community, and I have young children, I have a three-year-old daughter, and I have a six-month-old daughter, and if I can help in any way to make the school system better, then I'd like to do so.
What's your take on working with the receiver?
Excuse me, what's...
What's your take on working with the receiver?
What's my take on working with who?
The receiver.
The receiver.
So, I think that the school committee has its role, but I think that, obviously, the receiver has his role, I think that because of our receivership, the school committee doesn't have as great of a role right now, but I think the biggest and most important thing that the school committee and I myself would like to do, or should be doing, is trying to build bridges and maintain an open dialogue, open dialogue and communication, so that we can be as active as we possibly can, even though we don't really have a leg to stand on, right? So, I mean, I guess whatever needs to be done is really what I think with the receiver, if we can work with them, I think we can, I think we just need to find ways to build bridges, that's all.
And what do you see your primary areas of interest being?
What is my primary?
Primary areas of interest in the school committee?
Primary interest in the school committee?
Well, as in, the areas that you'd be focusing on?
That I would like to focus on.
Yeah.
Well, I think that, I mean, again, I can't say too much, because I haven't worked with the people that are on the school committee yet, right? So there's a lot of work that needs to be done always, and the work is never done, and I think everybody here is here because they want to do the work and give back to the community, and so, the more work that I can do with the people that are already on the school committee, and the receiver, and speaking with the receiver, and offering up whatever I can, whatever I can do, is really what my goal is. I don't have any agenda here, I'm just trying to be helpful in whatever way I can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Shea.
I just wanted to thank Tim for volunteering, he's been here through a very difficult time, he showed up, and that has been our big issue, is that people aren't showing up to take a seat, and I just want to thank him for stepping forward. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Murch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, my first question is, if you are appointed this evening, do you have the intention on running for election, in the upcoming election?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Awesome. The second question I have is, you stated that, you know, the school committee has a role, what is your personal view of the school committee's current role as it stands, if you can provide a little more detail into that?
Well, I don't, I don't like the fact that the school committee doesn't have any say in anything, right? I mean, the receiver has the complete control over everything, and really, we have no right to question anything that he's doing, other than trying to build the communication with that receiver. And so, in terms of the role of the school committee, it's to build the best, in my opinion, it's to try to build the best relationship that we can with the receiver, so that we can have some say in the things that are happening, and be considered in a conversation with the receiver on decisions that are being made, because the receiver doesn't have to consider the school committee at all, the way that it is, the way that things are currently. So, if, you know, for me, in a role in the school committee, I'm looking to communicate as much as possible, and have a working professional relationship with that receiver, because that's the most important thing.
And would, if a graduation requirement was community service, as far as like completing a certain number of hours for community service in order to either move on to the next grade or graduate, would you be opposed to that?
I think it depends on how it is, it depends, I don't believe that it's a black and white issue, I think it depends on what the requirements are, what type of, what type of community service hours are accepted, who's responsible for collecting those hours and managing those hours, because I know that there are some schools that have a requirement like that, and it's a complete joke, and they just write them off, and it really doesn't matter, it's a formality. It depends if it's meaningful, ultimately, it depends if it's a meaningful, if it's a meaningful goal, and it can, depending on how it's put together and who's responsible for it and managing it. So, no, I'm not opposed to it, I'm not opposed to it, I would be happy to vote for something if it was meeting the goals that we were seeking to make, reach.
Thank you, and I do appreciate you putting your name forward and taking the time out the last time we met as a body, and this time to answer questions and present yourself, I greatly appreciate it. Having members has been difficult, so the fact that you were willing to step up on your own accord, as a teacher, I know your job's not done when you punch out and go home, and you're also a parent with a little child, so you're constantly working, so I appreciate you finding a 25th hour in the day to volunteer for us, so thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. Very good, any further discussion? Very well, I'd like to entertain a motion to vote to appoint Timothy Messier to the school committee effective immediately through June 14th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Very well, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
A roll call, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, we'll have a roll call vote.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Catrona.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
Ms. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Murch.
Yes.
Ms. DeMillo.
Yes.
And Mr. Thomo.
Yes.
I believe that's unanimous?
It is.
Very good, congratulations, Mr. Messier, you're on the school committee. Is there anything you'd like to add to your statement?
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity to help in whatever way I can, thank you for asking the good questions that have been asked, and I look forward to working with everybody here.
Very good, thank you. Okay, we're going to pass over Agenda Items 7 and 8, and move on to Agenda Item Number 9. Okay, very good, Agenda Item Number 9, Review the following candidate requests submitted by Catherine Lapriore to fill a vacancy on the Southbridge School Committee effective immediately through June 14th, 2022, the next town election date, and according to the Southbridge Home Rule Charter, Chapter 3, Section 321.
So moved.
Second.
Very good, discussion. Counselor Lazo.
Just a quick, a quick comment, Catherine Lapriore, you talked about attendance, is a, one of the fine citizens of Southbridge that attends a lot of meetings, I know that she attends the council meetings, her attendance is sometimes better than some of the counselors. So I'd like to welcome Catherine to the arena as an elected official, excuse me, sorry about that, thought I shut that off. What I think we need to remember when these questions that were asked, what are you going to do when you get on the school committee, I think Tim Messier has commented to the powers of the receiver and the powers of the school committee, and I think we all know what they are. It's not news, I've been an advocate against receivership from day one, biggest mistake that ever happened to the Southbridge school system. And as we work forward, I think what we have to keep in mind is, the state does not have a dismount program, okay? And that's the most disheartening thing. The one thing that we have to do is to show that we can sustain a school committee, a responsible school committee, that could probably take over the reins at some point. I don't think we've moved forward in the design that we have right now, but I know these school committee members are looking around the horn here, that I think that they would make those good decisions for the students and parents of the town of Southbridge. But again, when we have a school committee that you can't get people to run for or appointed, they created this scenario, and now they want to say, "Southbridge, you can't sustain a school committee." Well, there are a lot of people that probably would run for the school committee, but under this design, why do you need me? The receiver's walked away from the school committee in the beginning, because there was some animosity amongst members towards the receiver. And I think what we have to do is, moving forward, cut a line in the sand and say, "Look, let's put this school committee together, support them, even if you're just learning, listening, and getting ready to take that district over," that's the mentality we need to get at this point. And we need, the council needs to step it up, and I've had this discussion with Mr. Jovan, to try and push the Department of Education to actually design a dismount. They had a design to take you over, and they ran fuzzy math on you to get you. Now, we need to get out of it, and they don't have a blueprint. That's the problem I have with the state, no blueprint for dismount. Show Southbridge, this is the document on how you get out of underperforming, you had one, and, you know, the data was fudged, but we need to work on this, I think Tim is going to do a fine job, it is a line of communication, it is frustrating. As a counselor, I'm frustrated. Tonight, we have a, we want to do a capital improvement, and one of the frustration things is, school district didn't want to go to the capital improvement, they want to go to education services, because the protector of the receiver is the chairman of education services. So, we need to change our thought, and put, hold the feet to the fire on the education, Department of Education, to come to Southbridge and tell us, you tell us, it's not money, because this council has put forth all the money above and beyond any other years, we need a blueprint. It's not a money issue now, it's a blueprint issue. We built a brand-new middle high school, and we put a college in it, because we don't have enough students to fill it. So, the student population's been going down, and I think we need to address the state. We keep blaming each other, the problem is in Boston, they need to come to these school districts, we're not alone, and we need to turn around and say, "Give us the blueprint for dismount." I think Catherine Lapriore, not to muddy up your appointment, I think there has to be a little understanding here, and start patting each other on the back on what a great job everybody's doing. This is one that I think Kathy Lapriore would be a fine school committee candidate to understand these concepts and where we have to go. Thank you.
Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, I just want to say, when I was chair of the school committee, Kathy was at every single meeting, for two years, I gotta say, she was, she, as Counselor Lazo said, she's here more meetings than many of the members are, so I just want to thank her for her persistence, and this is her second time applying to be put on this school committee. I supported you the first time 110%, and I support you now, I know you'll bring good trouble to the school committee, thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Catrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to echo some of what Counselor Lazo just said, thank you to both who were coming forward tonight, and to the new council member, I mean, to the new school committee member, Mr. Messier and soon-to-be, hopefully, the next. We know from the superintendent, there's no transparency, there's no accountability from the superintendent, he's had five years, we don't have a turnaround plan, don't get discouraged, please, just because there's no powers from the school committee, stick with it, it can be very frustrating, I'm sure, but please don't get discouraged, thank you.
Good, Mr. Murch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, I will be voting in favor of Ms. Lapriore, when I started running my school committee campaign, starting in January of 2019, I held roundhouse, roundtable events throughout town, she showed up to every single one of them, let alone showing up to every school committee meeting, and again, like Counselor Ryan had alluded to earlier, she had applied previously, and I had voted in favor then, my vote's not going to change. We, as the chair of the school committee, I am, we are trying, I'm trying to lead everybody and work with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, to try to get some informational and educational presentations to the, to the school committee and to the public. So, as far as moving forward goes, without having a dismount plan that is approved by the state, we have to create our own, and I believe with the appointment of Mr. Messier and the, soon, in about 38-second appointment of Ms. Lapriore, we will have a body that we can begin to educate on how to be a functional and proper school committee, and I think that's gonna, if we don't have a dismount by the state, we gotta make our own, we can't wait, just like we can't wait on the state for funding for a fire station, we can't wait on the state for funding for roads, we've had to take care of that on our own. So, we've, you know, we've got to try to, as far as moving forward, we have to make our own dismount plan, and I think with the appointment of these two members, I believe that we have a collective, of wealth of knowledge, of the community, of education, and of children as a whole, that we can make our own and educate ourselves, so that we can take over the reins as the town council starts working with Desi to try to develop a plan, as far as an exit plan for the receivership. Thank you.
Counselor Steves.
I'm thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask the same questions to Kathy that I asked to Tim. First, Kathy, would you mind coming up? I think out of fairness, it should be, we should be doing this. First off, thank you very much for putting your name in, and to you, Tim, we need, we need people who are willing to dedicate themselves, and there's no doubt that Kathy's dedicated. So, just for a quick, kind of start question I did with him, so why do you want to be on the school committee? I know you put your name in before, so why do you want to be on it now, and how do you see things have changed since the last time you tried?
I'm sorry, I'm close.
Could you hear me? Probably not, okay. Why do you want to be on the school committee, and how do you think things have changed since the last time you applied?
Why do I want to run, first of all? Why did I want? Well, I was born in Southbridge, so I'm Southbridge all the way, no matter what is going on, I'll fight for it, and I'm interested in the kids, I have a grandson who is at the middle school now, I would love to have my other three grandchildren there, we'll see, maybe sometime, but I'm very interested in learning some of, about some of the rumors that you hear, what's true, what is not true, and I just feel that maybe being on the committee, you're more involved in hearing what's really going on, and, I don't know, why, I was a little more nervous this time going for it, but I'm, I'm very much interested in being there and doing whatever I can.
Do you see yourself focusing on any particular issues?
Sorry?
Do you see yourself focusing on any particular issues?
It's hard because of not being able to vote on anything.
Right.
But I'm looking forward to when we are out of receivership, of course, when we were going through the process, I was kind of upset, I didn't, I didn't want that to happen. Then when it did happen, I said, "Okay, he's here, and, you know, the state is going to help us get out of this," so I was focused on that and just going with it. So, I just look to the future and hope that it's not too much longer that this goes on. I know that he has done a lot of good things, the people who work closely to Dr. Vallar feel that they have a lot of confidence in what he's doing, it's hard to see everything that he's doing, but I, the other day, I was speaking with someone who has worked closely with him, and he's been very good about clearing things up, if you have a question, he takes time to listen to you, but it's frustrating, being here for so long in this situation, for sure.
And do you intend to run? In the spring?
I'm sorry.
I said, do you intend to run for election in the spring?
In June?
Yeah.
I would, I would certainly be interested in that.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Catherine, I just want to thank you, I think you should have won that first time on votes, but fortunately, we lost that one, but I appreciate the patience you had for the last two years, and thank you for coming back and listening and having an open mind when you come in here, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Shea.
As everyone else is saying, thank you, Kathy, I have to say that of all the people who have ever sat in that audience, Kathy takes the best notes. This is not going to be a person who sits here and goes, "Ah, I don't know about that." She probably knows way more than the rest of us, or if she can't, you'll find it in her notes. So Kathy, thank you, thank you.
I've been asked if I was a journalist, if I was for the newspaper, or...
Hey, you've got it.
Anyone else? Very good, Item Number 10, entertain a motion to vote to appoint Catherine Lapriore to the school committee effective immediately through June 14th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Very good, any discussion? Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so with this appointment, we're filling two positions, so that leaves one position still open, and so are we going to appoint another one soon, or?
If someone comes forward and would like to be a member, yes, we will make that appointment.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Very good, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Catrona.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
Ms. Shea.
Yes.
Mr. Murch.
Yes.
Ms. DeMillo.
Yes.
And Mr. Thomo.
Yes.
Is there anything further you'd like to add to your statement?
I just, I'm just thankful for the opportunity to serve on the school committee, and hope that I don't flubber over a little bit, but I just, I just want to follow the comments, I guess.
Very good, very good. The chair would also like to offer thanks to Timmy and Catherine for coming forward, and I think we have the makings for, are actually a very good school committee, people that are interested, that are concerned, that care for Southbridge, have Southbridge's students at their best interest at heart, and I'm really excited and pleased about
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. We are adjourned.